Good evening, everybody. We're gonna go ahead and get this meeting started. If everybody could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Yeah, we have two, Mayor. We're gonna be pulling item number five point two and continuing that to a future meeting. And then we'll also just be pulling five point ten just to discuss. I'll just kinda give an overview, but it can be still, it can still be voted with the consent calendar.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve?
I'd like to ask that when five point two comes back, that we make it a discussion ordinance presentation item.
We have a motion?
A motion to approve.
I'll second. Can we get a roll call, please?
Councilman Schindler?
Aye.
Mayor Horn?
Aye.
Councilman Hedgecock?
Aye.
Councilman Vosper?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Ramirez.
Okay, we move on to our next item, awards, presentations, appointments, and proclamations. Our first one, we have two items tonight. Our first one is Chriscom Company Quarterly Report Lobbying Services.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. It's great to be here. I'm pleased to be able to present Chriscom's quarterly report. And my name is John Basmagian. For anyone who doesn't know me, I'm the Governmental Affairs Manager at Chriscom. And this is Emily Engelsgaard, our Grants Manager. So, to start out with the California legislative landscape, in June, Governor Gavin Newsom signed the 2024 state budget, which aims to support fiscal stability while maintaining investments in core programs such as education, homelessness, and as well as mental health care. The budget addresses the very large $46 billion shortfall through a combination of spending reductions and other measures while maintaining $22.2 billion in total reserves by the end of the 2024-2025 fiscal year. The California Legislature adjourned for their summer recess on July 3rd. And after a busy, after a busy two-week period, they reconvened and finished the 2023-24 session on August 31st. The final days of the session were marked by a flurry of different activities trying to rush to pass the remaining bills through the legislator legislature. Governor Gavin Newsom now has until the end of September to either sign or veto any of those bills. And any that he doesn't will automatically go into effect, but that hardly ever happens. He will either sign or veto almost all of them. The legislative session occurs, this legislative session occurs in a major election year with the presidential election coming up in November. This influences the political dynamics and decision-making process. Legislatures are a little bit more cautious about making or passing any politically risky bills that could affect their reelection prospects. The legislature has passed a spending plan that rejects many of Governor Gavin Newsom's proposed budget cuts, opting instead for an alternative revenue sources such as temporary tax increase on certain businesses. This plan aims to bridge an estimated $45 billion deficit while avoiding cuts to essential programs. However, some of the contentious issues like the minimum wage increase for healthcare workers remain uncertain. Given the challenging budget landscape, the state's Budget Committee decided that there will be no district earmark requests this year. However, we're actively positioning ourselves to be at the front of the line for next year's district earmarks request. This afternoon, I met with District Director Gilbert Felix, who's Assembly Member Soria's District Director. And we talked about how it's time for Colinga to be up next on the docket. So, we're going to be working closely with her office this year. In light of the significant budget deficit in California, we've also been diligently working with our U.S. Senator, Senator Padilla. Senator Padilla expressed strong interest in our project, the sodium hydroxide and injection facility. And he ultimately championed it through the submission process, but despite his support, it unfortunately did not advance through the Appropriations Committee. We're still working closely with Senator Padilla's office to urge the Appropriations Committee to put that project back inside the budget. We're also, as you know, Senator Padilla, or excuse me, Senator Butler did not opt to run for reelection. She was kind of the filler candidate after the passing of Senator Feinstein. So, the election this upcoming November will be between Steve Garvey and Congressman Adam Schiff. So, we're working closely with both of their offices to be ready for whoever ends up taking that role. Chriscom proudly provides the City of Colinga with our Chriscom Sacramento Snapshot. This is a resource that delivers concise summaries of all relevant bills from the California State Legislature. We include a status update on each of those, so it keeps the city informed about where they are at in the legislative process. And city administration receives our snapshot biweekly, ensuring that they're always up to date on any relevant and important updates. And then since my last quarterly update, we've also been, the city has also been posting that on our website on a biweekly basis. And now Emily will give our economic development update.
Council members, Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to give our economic development update. As most of you may know, our team at Chriscom attended the ICSC convention in Las Vegas in May. We made numerous connections there based off of preferences on what businesses you would like to see brought into the city, from cinemas to sporting goods stores, clothing stores, and big food brands. And we maintain a connection routinely with each of these different companies and businesses to keep Colinga in their minds and keep them familiar on Colinga, so that when they do decide to put in a new business, that they choose Colinga. Despite the many challenges presented by the current economic climate, such as the $20 minimum wage increase, we are working on different angles to help bring new businesses into the community. One of those strategies is utilizing second-generation restaurant spaces available throughout the city. Many, many of these companies don't want to build from the ground up. A lot of the construction costs are very high. So, having a second-generation building already built is very enticing to them. It's more affordable and it will, you know, help reduce all of those incoming costs. Though, these are prime opportunities, especially for new restaurants interested in opening up a place in Colinga. In addition, several of these businesses are seeking franchisees. So, we created a flyer and we shared that with Sean for distribution on the city's social media platforms as kind of like an outreach to attract potential local entrepreneurs that might be interested in franchise opportunities. Though, that is probably the highest opportunity to potentially bring a new company or business, store, restaurant into your city. Many companies are also, I'm sure you've been to a few, they're turning certain restaurants into automated stores. So, instead of seeing a person at the counter, it's just an automation. A lot of those are very enticing because there's less workers, they don't have to build as big of a building. And they're kind of like pilot programs. And we think Colinga would be great for that as kind of like a pilot program to see, hey, do these kind of restaurants, McDonald's, do that, does that work? So, we are really pushing for that when we do reach out to these different businesses. Several years ago, we also began evaluating Colinga's online presence. We recognized that many developers, many companies, they do online searches before investing in certain cities. So, working alongside city staff, we strategically introduced updated photos that highlighted Colinga in the positive light that you guys are. We, we put beautiful photos showcasing your city. And it has significantly boosted the city's visibility. In October of 2023, these images received over 2 million views online, and that has since surged to over 4 million views. This remarkable increase is a testament to our collective efforts in the growing appeal of Colinga. And we take a lot of pride in this significant achievement. So, Chriscom remains unwavering in its dedication to promoting Colinga as a prime location for new businesses. We are continuously working tirelessly to ensure that Colinga is seen in the best possible light, fostering a sense of confidence and security in our stakeholders. And I also would like to note that we were privileged to be an ad in the Business, in the Business View Magazine where they featured Colinga and listed us as a preferred vendor. The title of the article was "A High Quality of Life and a Desirable Place to Call Home." And we will be using that as a, as a tool under our belt to continue to market Colinga throughout our economic development venues. Lastly, we, if you will be attending the League of California Cities in Long Beach in October, we will also be attending. And we would love to see you guys at our booth, so we can continue to promote the City of Colinga. Thank you so much. And any questions or?
No, I just wanted to tell you thank you. We are gonna have three of our council there.
Oh, awesome.
We will see you in Long Beach.
We will be sending an email out with our booth number, and we would love to connect with you guys. It's always lovely to see you guys at.
Thank you.
I got a quick question, if I can.
Yeah.
I'm always looking for funding opportunities for our airport, infrastructure, and improvements. Is there anything you guys can do for us there?
Funding opportunities for the airport?
Yeah.
Just for development? So, yes, so we, that's one area that we can work with city staff on creating a budget request for, depending on what it is. There's always grant funds for those. So, if we want to go the route of a budget request, we'd have to just make sure that there isn't a pot of funds already for that in another area. So, we can look on that and get back to you and see if there are, is a pot. If not, we can go through state and federal governments on their district budget requests.
Perfect. Thank you.
Absolutely.
I got a question. I had heard that the legislator might be going back for emergency session to talk about the gas increase. Do you have any information on that?
Yes, so earlier in the year, or just recently, the governor did call a special session for it, and the Assembly responded, the Senate had not. So, we will keep you apprised of any important developments with that. But is there a certain issue with the gas that you're particularly interested in that we can?
It's highway robbery.
That's fair.
Yeah, it needs to go down as much as it can. And they need to start letting people drill and do whatever they can, so just want to keep being informed. I appreciate it.
We'll keep you updated on that.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Are there any other questions? All right. Well, as always, you have our contact information, so feel free to call or text at any time, and we're happy to keep you updated with anything.
Thank you.
Of course. Thank you.
Okay, next we have the swearing-in of our interim city manager, Sean Brewer.
All right, please, you're writing. I, Sean Brewer, do solemnly swear, or affirm, that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic. That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California. That I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion. And that I will, that I will wield and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. This time, we have a certificate.
He's got his hands full for sure. We know he can do it. Okay, we move on to our next item, citizens' comments. This section of the agenda allows members of the public to address the city council on any item within the jurisdiction of the council. Members of the public, when recognized by the mayor, should come forward to the lectern, identify themselves, and use the microphone. Comments are normally limited to three minutes in accordance with state open meeting laws. No action will be taken by the city council this evening, and all items will be referred to staff for a follow-up and a report. Citizen comments submitted in writing to the city clerk by 5:00 PM on the day of the city council meeting shall be distributed to the city council and included in the record, however, they will not be read. Do we have anybody that would like to come up and speak? Mary?
Mary Jones, District Four. Don't District, I have no idea. I forget. Anyway, we were, our city has had the Next Gen wire put into our community. And we were all told that the sidewalks and everything would be repaired before the month was up. And there are still a lot of scars on the sidewalks, unsafe places. And my question is, should we just go to the company itself, or should we come to you? Because I don't know who the agreement for service was through.
It would, it would be Next Gen that would take care of it.
So, we go right to them?
Yep, just, you can go to their website and actually, there's an area there where they'll call you and come and do it. They're actually replacing the, any spots that they've actually busted up. They're taking that whole section and replacing it with actual cement and replacing spots in the asphalt as well.
Okay, that's what they said they'd do, but we're still waiting. Okay, thank you.
Well, I think they still have until mid-October, I believe, until they're completely finished. And they've been, right now, I believe they're close to the middle of town, and they're actually repairing all of that, so. Any other? Counsel? Okay, move on to public hearings. We have none tonight. Consent calendar, we have 10 items tonight. Are there any other items that would need to be pulled, tabled, and talked about? Okay, we have, we do have one item to talk about, and that would be item five point 10. Sean.
Thank you. Mayor and Council, I just wanted to kind of give you guys an update on the Derrick Reservoir project. I know this has been a project we've been, I think since I've started working at the city, has been on the books. So, we're happy to bring a bid award tonight. I wanted to kind of give an overview on the project. It is a big project for the city, and it's impactful in a sense that it does take 7.5 million gallons of water storage offline for six months. Construction is expected to start October 21st, and this project is all funded through the 2020 Water Bond that was issued back in 2019. Like I said, construction is expected to last about six months, starting in October through about April. So, we will lose about 7.5 million gallons of capacity during construction. So, staff's been coordinating kind of contingencies. If there's any unforeseen events such as water leaks on the system, because it could impact, you know, what, not necessarily have us run out of water, but just be cognizant of the fact that we have limited storage. We're gonna go from having a seven-and-a-half million gallon tank plus a three-and-a-five to basically a total of eight million gallons total. And that's why it was on purpose to do it in winter time, because we only use about three, three-and-a-half million gallons of water a day in the winter time. So, we have ample capacity. And so, we're just having ongoing, ongoing coordination with the police department, fire department, public works, and utilities. We're reaching out to the state hospital, the prison, the school district, the Westalls College District, our oil companies. Everyone that's basically our larger water customers. So, if something does come up, there are certain areas in the system that we have had leaks in. If we do, knock on wood that we don't. But if we do, we have contingencies in place to be able to get that information out to the residents through our social media, also on the, on our website, to ensure that, hey, we may need to restrict some type of water during those times if, in fact, it's maybe a longer than a 24-hour period where we may, it, the repair may take.
Is, I got a question on that. Is there a way we can utilize the school system that way when it does? Maybe they can do their, their wide, citywide notification on phone?
That'll be some of the discussions we have with them to see what capability we have of getting notifications out. We're also looking at making sure we have appropriate staffing levels and working with police, fire, public works. We may have to, in, you know, worst-case scenario, use, use the bodies to get the word out, you know, basically going around within the neighborhoods. But I don't expect that, but it's just, we're looking at worst-case scenario, knowing that we have water offline. So, we're looking at all those contingencies. We're gonna make sure that we have all additional parts on hand for different pipe sizes. It's really the biggest impact is our transmission lines, not necessarily our distribution lines here in the city. And then we're also doing, we'll probably enhance some of our infrastructure patrols because areas out by the water plant, we don't necessarily see. Instead, we start seeing low-level alerts on our tanks that we're, we have a huge leak. And those are large lines that can drain a tank pretty quick. So, we're ensuring that all those alarms are working, everything's in place. And so, with that, I just wanted to kind of update the council on that. We're gonna get some more information out and continue that during the process and during the project. But tonight, this is the action to award the bid, and we'll be working on contracts and bonds, performance bonds with the contractors, and work with our engineers to get this project started towards the end of October.
Any questions, counsel?
Yeah, do you expect any unforeseen impacts on the water fund?
From this?
Yeah.
No. So, basically, the project came in $200,000 under engineer's estimate. The total project cost estimated with contingency is $4.4 million, and there's money in, left over in the water bond to pay for that.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? So, is this gonna be just a discussion, or you want us, is this for, set up for?
This is just additional information, but it can all be approved together.
So, do we have a motion to approve consent calendar as, as read with the changes?
Yes, I'll, I'll motion to approve the consent calendar without five dot two.
A second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Schindler?
Aye.
Councilman Vosper?
Aye.
Councilman Hedgecock?
Aye.
Mayor Horn?
Aye.
Okay, we move on to our next item, six point one, ordinance, presentation, discussion, potential action items. Discussion direction, potential action on the League of California Cities 2024 Annual Conference Resolutions. Sean.
All right, thank you, Mayor and Council. There's no staff recommendation. However, a consensus of the council should be met in order for the voting delegate to vote on the council's behalf related to this item. So, the League's 2024 Annual Conference is scheduled for October 16th through the 18th in Long Beach. And a part and part of the annual conference is the annual business meeting during the assembly scheduled from 8:30, scheduled for 8:30 on Friday, October 18th. At this meeting, the League members consider and take action on resolutions that establish League policy. So, in order to vote at the annual business meeting, the city council must designate a voting delegate and up to two alternative voting delegates. The city council has designated Mayor Horn as this year's voting delegate, and Councilman Vosper and Mayor Protim Ramirez as the alternate voting delegates, who may vote in the, in event that Mayor Horn is unable to serve in his capacity. So, this year, one resolution's been introduced for consideration at the annual conference, and will be referred to the League Policy Committee. In previous years, the League resolutions have been brought before the council to ensure the council's consensus of resolutions to be voted on. So, with that, Mayor, I'll let you initiate the discussion if you guys have any on that item.
I'm not sure if all of the council has read it. I'm pretty sure most of you have, for the most, for the most part. So, we're, we're gonna be voting on Assembly Bill Number 571. And what that does is it gets it to where local governments, like ourselves, actually have a say, just like the actual government does. government does. So, it gives us more -- it gives us more right to do things that we need to do. There's five other bills that are attached to it. They've all been modified, and this one goes over the top of that, so that way it fixes everything, gives us a say. Counsel, have any questions?
I'd urge that we support it because right now, the Assembly and the Senate don't have to follow the same rules that the local municipalities do, including the Brown Act, SEQA campaign finance regulations, and it's just ridiculous that they get to skirt around that stuff, and so I'm completely in favor of us supporting this.
Okay, we'll go ahead and -- do we need to motion on this, or just do a roll call?
Yeah.
Consensus, so?
A decision whether you're going to support or not support.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we support this item.
I'll second.
Can we do a -- can we do -- I did?
Mayor Horn?
Aye.
Councilman Schindler?
Aye.
Councilman Hedgecock?
Aye.
Councilman Vosper?
Aye.
Okay. Let's move on to our next item, City Managers' Announcements.
I have three. Just wanted to advise the council, we received a letter from Cal Fire about our tree grant, our urban forestry grant that we applied for, for $351,000, and we were notified that we're being awarded those funds. That'll include developing a tree inventory and forest management plan for the city, which is basically a software-based GIS mapping of all of our trees in town, looking at conditions, setting landscape standards, and then urban canopy deficiencies around town and areas that we should be looking at planting trees. It also includes planting 20 new trees as part of a community planning event, so we'll be including that, and then also conducting some community outreach and education. We did receive a letter of support from the school district, and we'll be working with them on some educational material to get out to the community. The other thing I wanted to bring up, and we can discuss that in another meeting, or just getting a consensus from the council, is our City Council's schedule for their meeting schedule for the remainder of the year. I know in past years, our next meeting's October 3rd. October 17th is the week of the League Conference, and typically, when there's another person in the capacity to handle the meeting while the other -- while the city manager is gone, we don't have that right now. So, we'd be looking at probably canceling the October 17th meeting. November 7th, we would have a meeting, and then November 21st is kind of a -- whether we need to have it or not, it would actually allow an extended timeline for staff reports and agenda items to be added to the December 5th meeting. If we hold off and we canceled November 21st, it is getting close to the holiday, even though Thanksgiving's the end of the month, not necessar -- it's usually that week or close to that week. So, if the council's okay, we can cancel the 21st unless we absolutely need something added to it. And then, we'll have December 5th. December 19th could be an option, because typically, we only have one meeting in November and December, but this seems like the holidays are at the tail end of each month, and so we can maybe keep the 19th open as an option if we need it, but if we don't, then we can assume it's going to be canceled. And then, January 2nd would be canceled, and then we'd have the January 16th meeting. So, if the council's okay with that, we'll proceed with that schedule. We can always leave the 19th of December open. If we have something that needs to be done, we'll communicate that with you guys in advance.
And we usually do. From the last couple of years, we usually have a special meeting in between just to kind of catch it, so if we do miss one, we've already got it.
So, did you say December 5th is a meeting?
Yes, so October 3rd, November 7th, December 5th, and January 16th.
Can you email that schedule to us?
Yes, I'll send it over to you guys, yeah. Yeah. And the last thing I have is just, I know that Scott was unable to make the meeting today, so I was going to kind of give a little plug on the Wings and Wheels event that we have coming up on Sunday, September 29th, from 11:00 to 6:00 p.m. It's free entry to the community. We, as of right now, have several airplanes, probably 30-plus airplanes coming to the airport for static display, and we also have about 70 cars, I think, we've got right now. And there'll be lots to do for the kids. We're going to have about 10 food trucks, 30-plus vendors, and so it should be a really good day to come out, bring your families, and enjoy the day. So, it's turning out to be a nice, large event, and I hope everyone comes out so we can hopefully dovetail into future actual air shows with aerobatics and a lot of excitement. So, that's all I have, Mayor.
Counsel, have any? There's actually -- there's going to be music, and there's actually going to be a band out there, at least one that I know of, so, yep. Council members have any announcements? Okay, and I have none right now. Are there any future agenda items? None at this time? Okay, we're going to go ahead and move on to closed session. We've got three items. With that being said, meeting is adjourned.